Good morning, everyone. It's ten o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order for Polk County Commissioners' Court for November twelfth through twenty-five, ten a.m., in Polk County Regional Health Building, Suite A. So at this time, we would like to ask Robert Murphy with Providence Baptist Church to come forward and relieve us of the prayer.
Let's pray. Father, we just praise you for how good you are. I thank you for your presence always. I thank you for your faithfulness. Thank you for the beauty of your creation, and I thank you for the place that we get to live and serve and love. And God, I pray that today those are the things that we're drawn to and we're led to. God, I pray that you would have your way here today. God, that the things that happened here, the decisions that are made, the pleas that are brought forward, God, there would be things that point us to you. God, that you would just be honored and glorified in it all, and then the way that we conduct ourselves is a question of your life in us. So we just praise you and we thank you. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, sir. Okay, Madam Clark?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, public comments. We have one individual that's signed up for public comments. Mr. Burke? You have three minutes, and she's the keeper of the clock.
I will try to finish before three minutes. Um, Mr. Burke, I'm a lawyer. I've been a lawyer for almost fifty years, despite how young I look. For forty-six of the last years, I represented people entirely, my whole practice has been representing people facing capital charges in Texas and in other states. I'm here to tell you, there's been some public discussion about the public defender office that you all have approved, and I was here to try to support you in doing that. It's the right thing to do. In my experience in capital cases for all these years, I've seen public defender offices and I've seen private counsel appointed. And in general, the better work has been done by public defender offices. And the reason for that is simple. When you represent a criminal defendant, there are three things you have to do. You have to develop a relationship of trust, and you have to learn about that client's life as much as you can. Second, you have to look at the charges that are facing your client and investigate. You can't just take the word of law enforcement or the prosecutor for what your client is alleged to have done. The third thing you have to do is to research the law and make a judgment with your client about what the best course is to proceed. That takes time. It takes resources. It takes money for investigators, occasionally money for experts, mental health experts, forensic experts. And public defender offices are set up to do that. They have budgeted those kinds of expenses. If you're a private-appointed counsel, you have to ask the court for that money, and often courts say no. I know that from my own experience. For that reason, public defender offices, the experience has been, are generally able systematically to provide more effective representation for indigent people. And you all have recognized that and done the right thing in my view in agreeing to set up this office. I will do my part as I can in as a part of this community to help other lawyers see that. I may not succeed. We may be criticized. But I think if the office is set up and well-staffed, the criticism will take care of itself. Because the work that that office will do will speak for itself, and the people in this county who are indigent and require defense, effective defense, will get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, informational reports. Receive announcements from the Healthy County Committee. Is someone doing that? Are you doing this?
Well, we do have the, on the twenty-first, we do have the blood drive. And then for every ten employees, there'll be a donate drawing for fifty dollars and stuff. We also have the maintain, don't gain coming up, November the twenty-fourth through January the fifth. I don't know if there's something else y'all want to add on to it, James or Nicole?
Other than we would like as much participation from departments as we can get. We do have a few scales that can be lent out to offices if they need them. And then that's really it. The blood drive is here in the parking lot on the twenty-first. So we would like to have as many people participate in that as we can get.
Sounds good.
It's really everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to receive our yearly report from Veterans Services. Okay, so Melissa, you're going to have to explain carefully to all of us exactly what all this means.
Gotcha. So, since we have several new commissioners that haven't heard of commissioner or a report from the Veterans Office since you've been elected, this breakdown that I gave you, the main column that I want you to focus on is the compensation and pension column. It's actually collaboration of all of the benefits from our veterans, their dependents, surviving spouses. It's compensation benefits, dependency and indemnities, when there's a service-connected death that the surviving spouse receives. Pension benefits. This money is what comes into our veterans' hands and is able to spend that money in our county. So it makes for that a great economic benefit to our county to, for our veterans to have that assistance with their VA filing claims.
So part of what Melissa does is she assists our veterans in receiving these benefits so that their quality of life remains as stable as possible. And so the breakdown is basically the compensation and pensions that they receive. Any vocational or rehabilitative assistance that they receive, insurance that they receive, medical services. And you'll notice that we had, like, the peak in our numbers was around two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, where we had over five thousand residents that were actually requesting assistance. So it's not to say that every single veteran is going through her office. These are the veterans that are receiving assistance through her office. And so it provides you with the totals. So you have the medical services, which began in early two thousands, mid-two thousands, and then the total benefits. And so the total benefits for 2024 is eighty-three million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, and just for some stats on my office alone, for the 2024 year, I assisted three thousand, sixty-three veterans and their families. This was by phone contact, email, in-person contacts. I received a good number of calls on a regular basis. So far this year, through October, I've had contact with two thousand and ninety-five veterans and their families. I also brought some numbers on our grant, our Fund for Veterans Assistance Grant picked off. And for the month of October so far, we had assisted five veterans. And we assisted them out of the columns. We had a rent and mortgage that we had paid on. We had paid on utilities and helped with the insurance, vehicle insurance for one of them. And that has picked up. So every month, we have more veterans that are getting the word in and are coming forward for some assistance with some emergency financial help.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Melissa. Appreciate it. Okay, old business. Approve the minutes from the previous meeting on term fourteen, which is regular session. Copy of the minutes was provided for your review.
So moved. Second.
Did you get them?
No, I need a table, please.
Request a table again?
Okay, move. Second.
Purvis Cassidy, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. New business consent agenda. You have addendums for FY 2025. Addendum number one for the amount of two thousand, two hundred and forty-three thousand, two thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirteen cents for FY 2026, and the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Is there anything else in the consent agenda that anybody wishes to pull?
Table number four.
Table number four.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Table number four, which is the minutes again. So we have a motion by Commissioner Purvis, second by Commissioner Dubos. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, which is your regular agenda. Item number fifteen A, consider approval of personnel matters as follows. Personnel action form requests submitted by department head since the last meeting in review of any authorized emergency hires. We included a preliminary listing of the PAFs in your packet, and there are no emergency hires.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Dubos, Commissioner Robertson, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen B, discuss and consider request from Road and Bridge Precinct Three to use discretionary funds for one-time bonus. Commissioner Purvis has requested this agenda item, and his letter to the court is included for your review. He's requesting approval to use discretionary salary funds to pay out a one-time bonus to fund Robert Blakely in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. He's reached step sixteen on the pay scale and is ineligible for a step increase. I'm assuming that's coming from you.
That amount's thirteen hundred.
It's thirteen hundred? Okay, correct the amount to thirteen hundred.
So moved.
Comes from Commissioner Purvis, second Commissioner Cassidy. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen C, discuss and consider request from Road and Bridge Precinct Four to use discretionary funds for one-time bonus. Commissioner Cassidy has requested this agenda item, and his letter to the court is included for your review. He's requesting approval to use discretionary salary funds to pay out one-time bonus to fund Kayla Pitts in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. She has reached step sixteen on the pay scale and is also ineligible for a step increase. Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Dubos, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. D, Sheriff Lyons's request to give Chief Deputy Anthony Lowery a three-step discretionary increase for the county personnel policy. Discretionary increases exceeding two steps per year may be considered by the Commissioner of Court on a case-by-case basis. A copy of Sheriff Lyons's request is included for your review in which he justifies a three-step increase by stating that Chief Lowery's professionalism, leadership, and unwavering dedication to his department have established a standard of excellence and matched with any other law enforcement administrator.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Dubos, second Commissioner Purvis. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number sixteen, consider request for revisions and amendments to the budget as follows. The FY 2026 budget revisions as presented by the county auditor's office. A copy of the proposed revisions, number twenty-two-six dash oh-six, is included for your review.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Purvis, second Commissioner Robertson. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seventeen, consider request for capital purchases to be paid from the general fund balance and included on the FY 2026 reimbursement resolution for year-end issuance of legally authorized debt as follows. A, the sheriff's purchase of laptop docking stations for vehicles from Cloud Tech Incorporated in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars and forty-six cents. The court previously approved the purchase of aftermarket equipment for the sheriff's office vehicles as part of the enterprise lease agreement. However, the docking stations were not covered in that. So although the docking stations were not included in the original capital purchase projections for the sheriff's budget request, they're essential for daily operations. Fortunately, the total of capital purchases at this time remain at approximately a hundred thousand dollars below the original projections, which allows us flexibility to accommodate this expense. VTEC, Chief Lowery and Nicole Reeks selected VTEC through the county's by-board membership, and it offers the greatest value. A copy of their proposal is included for your review. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Robertson, second Commissioner Dubos. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seventeen B, acts on cameras, year two for the Polk County Jail in the amount of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ten cents. Year two of the five-year agreement for the jail's body cameras was included on the capital purchase projection listing, and this amount matches the projection listing. As a reminder, for the terms of this agreement, all cameras will be replaced at the midterm and at the end of this agreement. In addition to the replacement of any cameras that may malfunction at any time during the five-year term. A copy of this year's invoice is included for your review.
So moved.
I'll say, Mr. Cassidy, Commissioner Robertson, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seventeen C, acts on body cameras, year two for the Polk County Sheriff's Office in the amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. Year two of the five-year agreement for the sheriff's body camera was included on the capital purchase projection listing, and this amount matches the projection listing. Basically, it's a repeat of what we were doing at the jail.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighteen, consider any and all necessary action relating to the purchase of twenty-twenty Noram motor grader for Road and Bridge Precinct One in the amount of ninety-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents with trade-in and financed over a four-year term to be paid from Precinct One. Commissioner Robertson has requested this agenda item, the proposed finance term with cadence bank for the four-year terms are for five point oh-three percent, resulting in four annual payments of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents. The final amount may vary slightly based on the actual interest rate at the time of closing. A copy of the finance agreement was included in your packet for your review. Commissioner Robertson, make the motion.
Second.
Second Commissioner Dubos, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nineteen, consider any and all necessary action related to bid number twenty-two-six dash thirteen for the purchase of one motor grader for Road and Bridge Precinct Four. This bid packet was approved by the court on October fourteenth. All Commissioner Cassidy's request with the new equipment to be paid for from his fund balance. Purchasing and procurement office received them by November fourth, and some emailed the bid summary and a copy is included for your review.
So moved.
Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Purvis, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty, receive rating and recommendations from court-appointed scoring committee and consider any and all necessary action relating to the twenty-twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Local Communities Program as follows. The deadline for the submission of qualifications and proposals was Friday, is Friday, November seventh, or was Friday, November seventh, at two p.m. Commissioner Robertson, Courtney Comstock, Dave Sodasanti, and Jessica Hutchins met when we scored the proposal, met and bringing the recommendation to the court. A, will select a grant administrator to assist the county in its application for an implementation of one or more contracts if awarded by the Texas General Land Office. Is Jessica here? Or are you going to handle?
Jessica's here, maybe, but Waxman is over there.
Okay, so the recommendation is to go with Waxman? And that comes from that committee?
Yes.
You going to lead the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Cassidy, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. B, is to select an engineering firm to assist the county in its applications and project implementation of one or more contracts if awarded by the Texas General Land Office. That comes from that same committee?
Sean Berg and Anna Koch. And I'll make the motion.
I got a question. Where are they from?
They're from Houston.
Anybody ever worked with them before?
A lot of places have. I don't know right off the top of my head, but we did research. Exactly. We met as a committee.
So you have the scores there as well?
Can I ask, babe?
Yes, ma'am.
Of course. I mean, the many minutes we scored. I know we have a good history with other engineers. So if this is something anyone is hesitant on, because this is a large grant, and it's similar to the grant we're working on now. It takes years to move forward with. So if this is something that needs to be further researched, I want the court to be completely comfortable with us moving forward because a lot of it is work on y'all's projects. A lot of it is drainage work with these disaster recovery grants.
Let me start looking at the data that they submitted to.
Yes, and that's what we had to base everything off of, was their list of qualifications, their proposal.
Okay, I'll call. We'll table it to the next one.
How long they been doing this?
Many years. Right off the top of my head, I couldn't quote exactly how many, but they're not a startup company.
Jessica made- Very long history.
Yeah.
Plenty of counties and cities. Yeah, lots of county work. Our focus is more county than city. And lots of federally funded grant programs, drainage work. I'm sorry, on nineteen, I didn't get who it was.
What's that?
On nineteen, I didn't get who it was.
Nineteen?
Which company?
Was Commissioner Casby and then-
No.
Oh, which company?
On nineteen?
Who'd you buy it from? Henrichs?
Motor grader?
Henrichs. Henrichs.
Okay, thank you.
If y'all are comfortable, we'll try them one time. Don't hurt to try.
Hopefully, two or three or four. I said hopefully we'll try them two or three or four if it works out.
I'm having a really good look with GLS right now, too. I mean, I'm struggling there. When does this have to be? When does this application have to be turned in? That's what-
We haven't even opened the application yet.
Because we got time?
Yes, we do have time. And so whenever we were scoring them, we were looking at drainage in addition because the guidelines for this program hasn't been released yet. So we were looking at all the diversity of projects that you have to work on. So we included drainage, but infrastructure, water assistance, on-site sewer, any of the possibilities. That's what we were looking at when we were scoring those proposals, and they had an excellent proposal.
Let's table it, and y'all send us the information, and we'll look.
I was going to say, yeah, I'm sure Jessica can get you those, the books that we looked at that each-
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I'm not questioning y'all, but I mean, I'm just-
GLS.
They're doing, you know, they've been really good on this last GLO project, you know.
Okay, so Jessica, send the other commissioners the information. Now, make sure that you all only respond to Jessica, so that we don't have a quorum. Okay, so motion to table.
Second. I'm not questioning the committee, but I mean, I just, I mean, I'd like to see what made y'all change y'all's mind.
Or you just use the data that-
Yeah. And that's why we're here. Okay, who are we doing the second? Purvis and Cassidy. Okay, twenty-one, consider approval of revised Title VI nondiscrimination policy. There are several changes that have to be made, and they're all included in your packet for your review. I don't think we need to read through all of them, but for compliance with the program specialists with TechStop's Civil Rights Division, they made some recommended changes. So the current administration has rescinded executive orders one-three-one-six-six and one-two-eight-nine-eight, so they may be removed from the policy. They changed some appendices. They said that the complaints for the Title VI could only include race, color, or national origin. The updates have to be done at a minimum of three years or when the person who signed the plan changes. The LEP Plan section must include some questions. The primary program description and review includes the departments, the Title VI concerns for each department, and the review procedures for those departments. With data collection and analysis, this section is very similar to the primary program, except you're looking for process to collect the data and the purpose. The environmental justice section, the current administration also rescinded things related to environmental justice. And so you can leave this section as it is, and that way we don't have to delete that section. A notice of rights must be included. The complaint process, the current complaint process is not in alignment with Title VI processes. So we have the current procedure written in our template. And we might want to include a section named Training and discuss how and when employees will be trained to meet all the different expectations for this program. I know you all recognize that we actually assigned this to Carrie. And so Carrie has been doing all the training for the Civil Rights Division to comply with TechStop's requirements. Some of those requirements come down to TechStop from the federal government.
I'll make the motion, but also I'd like just to make a suggestion. The next time something like this comes up, any place where there's changes that they could just highlight in yellow, and then that way-
Well, we haven't made the changes. We are telling you-
That this is what the recommendations are. That's what I mean, the recommendation, you know, so it's for ease of looking what has been recommended.
Okay, but we haven't made them. That's my point. You will receive a red line like you normally do.
Okay.
That has the additions, which is what Carrie normally does. We're just telling you that this is what the recommendations, that they're going to be incorporated into the redraft as long as you all agree to them. And if you have anything else you want us to add to it, then you need to let Carrie know.
What if we don't agree to?
Huh?
What if we don't agree to?
Well, then we won't be getting any TechStop funding.
Okay, well, I mean, that, what that means is kind of no-brainer, what I'm saying. Thank you.
Yeah.
I was just curious, what if we didn't?
So-
They're pretty much telling us we do this or not.
Pretty much.
I wear no one.
Well, you are asking for their money.
Yeah.
Usually people that are giving you money want you to do what- Usually people that are giving you money want, want you to do what?
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy?
Ms. Galene had made the motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I second Ms. Galene's, with, with her request.
Galene, Purvis, and we will get you the finalized version with?
But I think what she was saying was, when you send it to us, how are these changes gonna be?
No, and that's what I'm saying, we'll, it'll vote to her that way. It'll either be redlined or it'd be highlighted.
Highlight is much kinder in general than redline.
Well, redline is what you deleted. Highlighted is what you added.
That's true.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Number twenty-two, discuss and consider approval to submit application to the Deep East Texas Council of Governments for the FY 2026 Solid Waste Grant. As of the time of the review, Cherie Pike and Carrie were finalizing the grant application. A copy was included for your review. And we need to know how the court would like to proceed.
So move.
Like, no, not. Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Robertson, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number twenty-three, receive presentation and discuss participation in the development of the 2028 Regional Flood Plan and methods to identify potential projects for consideration by the Regional Flood Planning Group, Trailer and Associates as part of the team of technical consultants that are assisting the NACUS and Sabine Regional Flood Planning Groups. And they are tasked with community outreach during the development of the 2028 Regional Flood Plan. So they would like an opportunity to discuss it with the court. Also, a copy of the presentation has already been provided, and there's a copy in, in your packet. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, Judge.
You wanna step up here so the mics will pick you up? Oh, never mind.
So I'm Cheryl, I am with Trailer and Associates. And as she said, we're tasked with community outreach, and we're trying to make sure that everyone is understanding of the plan and what it involves, and that we need to, everybody needs to get their areas in the plan, or there is no funding for it. So I'm gonna do a presentation, I don't wanna blind anybody.
Run, Cherie, run.
So first, we're talking about the NACUS Regional Flood Planning Group here. So what are regional flood planning groups? So many of you may be familiar with them, but some of you might not have been around. Y'all need to scoop up, you see?
No, we're gonna have it, right.
So they were created in 2020. So a quick and easy overview, there's fifteen groups that are based on major watersheds in Texas. And each group is independent of one another, but there is liaison between some neighboring groups. They meet regularly to facilitate the objectives of the statewide flood plan. And the objective of each flood planning group is to carry out the responsibilities placed on the flood planning groups as required under Texas Water Development Board codes. You can see there, I'm not gonna play for that. The regional flood plan versus the state flood plan. So basically, the regional flood plans develop after, using the information and data obtained by you, city officials, stakeholders, county officials, flood planning group itself, and our currently adopted plans were approved in 2023. The state flood plan consolidates all the information out of all the different flood planning groups in the state into a single actionable plan to reduce the risk and impacts of future flooding. So that current plan was approved in 2024, and we're now working on the 2028 plan. So amendments were possible to each document, but there will be no more amendments allowed. So if we get in any information that we want in the plan, we get that in now, because they're not gonna allow us to amend it. As you can see by this map, which is available on the Texas Water Development Board site, it has a great overview of all of the different flood planning groups, but particularly the NACUS. And you can drill down in this from the website, and you can look at all different sorts of things. You can see the existing infrastructure, dams, levees, identified low-water crossings, et cetera, and view, even view models. So it's all pretty fancy stuff, but why do you care about that? Money is what you care about that, is why we care about a lot of things. But obviously, also, we're talking about saving lives, we're talking about reducing hot water rescues, limiting damages to infrastructure and structures. And even though that's a primary goal, it still takes money to do that. So the Flood Infrastructure Fund is a program that's satisfied for projects using these funds for local share of other funding. There are two rounds of fifth applications that have been released so far, with 1.3 billion in project funding made available to Texas communities. They are in the form of flood mitigation evaluations, basically your studies, flood mitigation projects, which come out of those studies, and flood mitigation strategies, which would be things like alerting systems and low-water crossing signs and different things of that nature. So regardless of the funding category, projects have to be listed in the statewide flood plan to be considered for funding. So if y'all are wanting any sort of funding dealing with floods from the Texas Water Development Board, we need to make sure that we get that, those projects in this plan. And now's the time that we're doing that. So many communities lack representation in the 2023 Regional and 2024 State Flood Plan for a variety of reasons. Some are staff turnover, maybe didn't know about it, misconceptions about what the program entailed, maybe your lack of funds for a match. But all of those things can be taken care of. But if we don't get those projects in the plan, there will be no opportunity for funding. So that's why we're here today, to make sure that y'all understand, you know, the importance of that. Anyway, you can cut the handout. So that all boils down to what opportunities are there. So that's why we're here. We're here to try to reach out to the communities and make sure, you know, that you're aware of these, make sure that you're aware that we need to get your project, potential projects, into the plan. So think about what infrastructure you have, what's working, what's not working, what's ultimately needed to mitigate risks, and think big. Also, think small though, because there's a lot of money for projects out there, especially to small rural communities. So if you have a study that you need done for your area, make sure that you get that in the plan. Also, if you have a huge project that you think high in the sky, would never happen, but is something that you need in this area, be sure that you identify that as well. Because there are far potential ways to get funding for that, and you can possibly get some match for those grants. So we need to make sure that we get those in there. So it all begins with completing that survey. And I passed out a little handout to you that's got a QR code on it. It's very simple, you can just scan that QR code. I also emailed, tried to email, I was able to get a couple of you. I think I got the judge, and I think I got Galene, and I was a little bit blurred. But it might be easier for you to do that on your computer with the code rather than using the QR code, but it'll work that way too.
Now, that might be one more thing, you have the code, and you use it on the computer?
The little QR code that's on the top left. Yes, sir, you can scan that with your phone. And it'll take you to the site. And on that site, you can actually just basically drop a pin, go through the little? You can, you can put a little dot on the map. That will show. We can help you. But you can put a little dot on that map to show where flooding areas are. And you can say what causes the flooding, is it from upstream? Is it from just heavy rains? Is it from rains that occur once a year? Is it from rains that occur every six months? You know, you can get as detailed as you want, but as long as you put a pin on a dot on that map, you will get contacted by Freez and Nichols about what are you talking about? What project is this? What do we need to put in the state flood plan?
But I, I, I noticed, okay, that y'all, this is just for the NACUS River?
Yes, we also are doing Sabine, and Freez and Nichols is doing Sabine. I think Freez and Nichols is also doing Brazos, but they have hired somebody else for the Brazos area to do that.
Most of that'll be in the NACUS, these other guys, there's gonna be Trinity.
And, and that's fine, you can even put them on there for the Trinity. If you know that those, you know, exist, because since they're, y'all are so close, you know, and you have both watersheds in the county. Because it's important, no matter what, get that in the state flood plan, whether it's Trinity or whether it's Pope County.
And, and we may need to kind of come up with a plan for, for this, in terms of dropping pins and providing assistance.
That's gonna be, you say you can, you can get on the phone and get, then you get on the website to get on the computer?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and I did, I emailed that link to several of you. Did you get that, Galene? Yeah, so that's probably the easier way.
Yeah, you can pull that up.
It sounds like.
Yeah, because it's a whole lot easier to do, I think, on a computer. You can do it on your phone, but it's very small and you gotta wiggle in there. And you're, you're trying to find detailed areas to put a pin. So it's pretty easy to do on the computer though. And you can even do like whole project areas. I don't wanna get too technical, but you can, you can draw a hologram on that map and do a whole project area, if you wanna do that.
I think part of, part of it is like, right now, we are already moving towards a gauge system. And so we need to have a way of consolidating the information so that it's kind of all in one place. So my recommendation to the court is that you consider putting one more thing on emergency management.
I saw a bunch of places that flooded, just by part of?
And we sent out a survey several months ago, and we've actually sent it out twice to all the flood plan managers in the state, the emergency managers in the state. Generally, they went to the judges as well. And I, we try to get court members, but I don't think all of you have a, they have get email, or I don't have a get email address for you guys. But that was a more technical survey that actually was pretty difficult. A flood plan manager should be able to complete that survey.
We don't have a flood plan.
And we sent out two emergency managers too, though, so they may be able to do that. But I think it's gonna take, like you said, the consolidation of maybe all of you guys kind of getting together and saying, these are areas that we think, you know, we have, we know we have problems in when it comes to flooding, or like I said, it's water coming from upstream or, or even water that you know is going downstream that's affecting somebody, flooding houses, flooding buildings, whatever the case may be, it may just be street flooding, but that's important too. I happen to know, we've got a condo up here, so we've been through here when the street flooded, so I know that you have street flooding right down in this area.
Yes, yes, sir.
I would definitely put that on the map. So anything, and I'll be happy to help in any way, y'all can always call me, I can kind of walk you through it if you get lost on it.
So are you making this presentation to the cities as well?
We're trying to make it to as many people as we possibly can, as many.
Okay, well, I would, I would definitely recommend that you contact the cities and visit with them.
Yes.
Because the Shokes Creek flooding is in their jurisdiction.
Well, and it doesn't matter really what jurisdiction, you don't have to stay with them.
I'm, I'm not saying it does. I'm saying we, it's confusing if we're submitting data and they don't know about it, vice versa. So I would suggest that we contact all the cities as well.
Yes, yeah, we have, we've, we've sent out emails and talked to people. We went to DEDCOW, we're trying to, you know, to, to go to everybody that we can possibly get to to try to explain, you know, why it's so important. And it's important to get all of that, all of those things fixed as much as possible. Obviously, the state's not gonna do every project that's put forth, but there are a lot of viable projects in this area, and we wanna make sure that they at least get considered by the state.
I think we have, we've provided some of this information to some of our water districts, you sound like to some of our utility areas.
And again, we've, we've, we've handled all of them as well. I think that, and there could be some confusion, and could be why we're not receiving some of the feedback we'd like to, is that maybe, like you said, the county doesn't wanna put it on the map because it belongs to the city, the city maybe doesn't wanna put it on the map because maybe the water district's more involved. So therefore, nothing's getting put, you know, on the maps, and that's unfortunate, because we wanna make sure we get everything that we can on it.
Okay, well, we, we do have contact information for the cities?
Okay.
Might be something that for the, for us to include the volunteer fire departments?
Yeah, I'd say the more people you include, the better, yeah.
Okay, and we'll just coordinate it all through emergency management.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any more questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, we just want, we don't want anybody to get left out, that's the main thing, you know? We don't even know. You wanna be eligible for this funding that's coming up, because there is a lot of money, as we know, we just voted on a big, you know, sum of money to come down, and that's what that money's gonna be used for. So we wanna make sure, you know, the state's as resilient as possible when it comes to this.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy?